................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................... Evening rain on Saturday, high sixty, below near fifty. ...............
Godwin?
Here.
Uh, approval of minutes, you all received copies of the March seventh, uh, regular scheduled meeting, uh, minutes and the six pages of minutes from the March fourteenth special meeting with the, uh, township trustees, uh, at their facility. Any additions or corrections?
Just what I had mentioned.
Yeah, if none, they'll stand approved as presented. Approval of the current financial report, you all received a copy of the spreadsheet, current financial report. Any additions or questions for the auditor?
Move to accept the financial report.
Motion by Mr. Oliver to accept the, uh, current financial report for the month of March, Orwell to date. Discussion, call roll, please.
Hensley?
Yes.
Cottishell?
Yes.
Oliver?
Yes.
Rogers?
Yes.
Tryon?
Yes.
Godwin?
Yes.
Approval of the agenda, do you have anything to add, or we're all in good shape? Okay, we have nothing to add.
Motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Motion by Mr. Schmidt to approve the agenda as presented. Discussion, call roll, please.
Hensley?
Yes.
Cottishell?
Yes.
Oliver?
Yes.
Rogers?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Tryon?
Yes.
Godwin?
Yes.
Public hearing, we have nothing scheduled specifically at this time, anyone wishing to address counsel may do so, some, uh, please come to the microphone, state your name and address and your situation or whatever you want to present.
Jeff Server, three fifty Martin Street. I put a formal request into Kirk Garrison, requesting utilities, uh, fifty-two sixty, State Route forty-nine. So, I don't know if you guys are all aware of that, but, uh, and, you know, I've kind of looked over, I got a copy of a earlier pre-annexation agreement and I would be agreeable to signing it and would be willing to annex in the event that, uh, that became an option.
U.S. Chemical Plant, that, or company building, whatever, that's inside the city already, right?
Yeah, that's a separate one. Yeah.
Normally what we do, that request was forwarded to me as president of council, will assign it to, uh, utilities committee for a quick review and they'll make a recommendation to council and we can, uh, have legislation prepared and if council so approves it, that automatically goes on the agenda and I think we could probably accomplish that next, uh, regular scheduled meeting.
Would I be allowed to sign it at the meeting?
Um, the event, yeah, sure, not a problem. Yeah.
This is approved.
Yeah, we could do that.
Sounds excellent.
Mr. Burke, the, this is much like the, the property that's next to them, um, the, I don't know if you call it the north, the west, the northwest corner, whatever, uh, the brew bakers that we just had the same thing with the pre-annexation agreement would, would, and I can't foresee the outcome being different, will we need to actually meet or, or what, what, what do you think about that, or just have the legislation?
Well, I think in, in order to, to keep the, the due process going and be fair to everyone, that should be done in that manner.
Okay.
That would be good.
You know, as long as the, the language is maintained-
Yeah.
-as I've been presented and, you know, as long as I have the ability to petition at the point that was annexed to, you know, possibly waive some amenity like sidewalk or whatever.
Yeah.
Sounds, sounds great to me.
Well, we could do that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Uh, nothing to say.
Wow.
Move it along.
Is it, are you gonna mention anything about the, um-
Gavel.
The gavel with the Sonic Lodge?
I could, yes. Totally forgot, I brought it up Monday night at the GOP meeting, uh, think about it today, yeah. Thanks for bringing it up, yeah. I don't know if anybody, uh, knows that coming up, but at the, Miss, the Sonic Lodge, Masons will be, uh, they have worked for the last fifteen months in bringing Washington's gavel through town. It's a very rare opportunity that anybody in this area will happen to get the chance to see it. And, uh, and it's gonna be at the Arcanum High School on Thursday, Greenville's new school on Friday, uh, there's gonna be a little get together, I think, on Thursday night and then on Saturday, it'll be displayed at the Basonic Lodge, uh, what do you call it, Lodge?
Lodge, three thirty on Memorial Drive.
On Memorial Drive, so, uh, the first, early in the afternoon, be for the other people, Masons traveling from other places in town and, but it'll be open to public at three thirty.
Mm-huh.
Very, it's, uh, if anybody is interested, uh, look on the internet, uh, our Washington's gavel, it's a very historic, it was originally, uh, made, uh, to dedicate Capitol, cornerstone of the Capitol building. And then it's been used in various other buildings, uh, Queen Elizabeth used it one time to dedicate some buildings and then it was finally dropped by somebody and nobody's allowed to touch it again, so. But it's very interesting, it's a great opportunity, if anybody, especially historians or anybody that's interested in it, to stop by on Saturday afternoon, late afternoon and it'll be open until everybody quits coming to see it, that's what I understand. And there'll also be a dinner, if anybody want to come to the dinner.
You have to purchase tickets ahead of time.
Purchase tickets ahead of time, so. Uh, anybody else have anything to add to that?
I, I know that, um, reading the article in the paper or, or some, some sort of, that there's gonna be, uh, the city's cooperating, gonna reroute Memorial Drive to One Direction and, uh, possible shuttle service from the van show, is there anything else that the city's gonna be asked to do or provide besides?
Police protection. Police protection. Police, uh, not protection, but police presence.
There already be a guard pretty much the whole time on it from the Sheriff's Department.
Correct, from the auxiliary.
And is there anything that the council is officially supposed to do or be a part of?
Either, I'm not sure who all they're gonna invite, but there are gonna be some people invited to the Thursday night presentation of some sort of rumors, so, and I have no idea who all is gonna be invited.
Okay.
So, but, there's a possibility, I don't think they've got to that yet, they just wanna make sure that directions and making sure that people are getting in and out of town and around Memorial Drive as best possible and that was kinda, we had a little meeting with them the other day and-
Well, I, I think this is a great event.
Excited for them.
And, and I know we had one other big, um, event some years back with the Disney Parade and there, there was a, a lot of talk about the possibility of, of, you know, not being able to get in and the crowds and handling and, and the city was well-prepared, but because of that, there were a lot of people that-
Didn't come.
-were nervous, didn't come because they didn't wanna get caught in traffic and so it wasn't attended as, as what it should be, but I, I think that this, the planning is, is there and, and the situation that the city will be able to handle any, any size of crowd that comes to see this. I hope that, that people don't mind, there may be a little wait in the line, but I think it'll be a good thing.
Yeah, yeah. All right, thanks for reminding me, appreciate it.
That's it.
Okay.
Thank you. Just a quick note, council will have, uh, an opportunity to discuss this two more times because it arrives on the twentieth of April and here's the twentieth, twenty-first and twenty-second, those are the dates, so. And, uh, police and fire chief have been involved with this discussion as well. So, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to end there.
I didn't even, I didn't tell them what was, uh-
Okay, safety service director, Mr. Garrison.
Thank you, Mr. Council President, uh, not sure if everyone is aware, but there was a countywide press release, uh, over the last, uh, week or so, that county fire departments will be the recipient of a fire marshal's grant and the city of Greenville will be receiving approximately forty-seven thousand dollars, uh, for the use to purchase radios, uh, and then also, uh, be what we'll call Marx capable, which is the statewide radio system. And to speak a little bit more intelligently, uh, about this whole grant and the process of purchasing radios, I've asked Chief Thompson to, uh, take the first part of my time to explain that grant process and go over the estimate, uh, with you.
I don't know if I can speak more intelligently, but I'll try. Before I, um, give an update on the Marx system and what we're trying to do, I first would like to take a second to thank council for giving me an opportunity to speak at the special meeting last Tuesday. It was an opportunity I wasn't expecting, especially about, um, expressing what's going on with the mutual aid agreements between the two fire departments. Unfortunately, I cannot give you an update, there's not been a second meeting yet, hopefully we'll have one soon. Uh, with that, I'll move the Marx. When this started back in December, I'll give you a quick feedback on it before I get to the quote in front of you. When the grant opportunity started, we looked at Motorola Marx radios and Kenwood's and at the time, the problem with the Marx was that face value with the cost, these are extremely expensive, as you can see. The, the Marx radios, basically we purchased some, we had to pay a user fee and we can't use them because the county's not on Marx system yet. And it's unclear at what point in time the county will have the infrastructure to which. So, these ultimately could sit in my office collecting dust for the next couple of years, that's reality. Um, we looked at what they call dual-band radio at the time and those were even more expensive. So, to give you an idea where we started, with Motorola's quote, we were gonna buy sixteen Marx radios with the grant and if we went to Kenwood, we could, we could buy eighteen Marx only. If we was gonna do dual-band at the time, the most radios we could get out of either manufacturer would have been maybe ten, twelve at the most. So, on that, comparing radios, it just wasn't feasible to spend the, the grant wisely. Since that time, the quote in front of you, is for Kenwood, it's a probationary, or a probationary, a promotional rebate for dual-band. To give you an idea, when this started with, I'm trying to stay with Kenwood, my Kenwood quote originally for eighteen radios was forty-five thousand dollars. So, the quote in front of you is for twenty radios for less money, forty-four seven nine seven. So, what these radios are gonna do for us is we're gonna immediately use them, we will be able to have the capability to program our current frequencies that we have in today's radios and use them immediately. At such time that the county has the infrastructure and we go to Marx, we simply change the zone and we're on Marx. So, that will no longer sit not being used over the next couple of year period. The other thing that this does for us is a lot of our current radios are twelve to fifteen years old, uh, we're already having issues with batteries and mics and just wear and tear from their age. So, rather than putting money back into those current radios, we're only gonna use for a limited time before Marx gets here, again, we can use these radios or dual-band. And because we were able to get to twenty over the last week, because again, when this started, we were at eighteen, making some changes, we got to nineteen and going back and forth with our sales rep in the last couple of days, we were able to get that to twenty. Um, so we'll use them immediately and get good use out of them. As far as user fees, the current grant gives us enough money left over to pay one year of subscription fees, or ten dollars a month per radio at a cost of twenty-four hundred dollars for the first year. Is our intent is, when the grant opens again, we will submit at a minimum to have the next year's fees paid for through the grant. Eventually, the downfall of this whole program with Marx, if there is a downfall, would be that eventually, who, who can say when the state fire marshals' Marx grant program will stop being funded and it goes away? When that day comes, we will have to pay those user fees out of the general budget. And I can't tell you when that's gonna happen, it's not happening anytime soon. So, that's where I'm at with this current, current deal, which is the best deal I can get and we're gonna use them immediately, that's the feeling. Any questions?
The, understanding that the grant actually will cover this request plus the first year, is there anything in this, that case, a, uh, uh, one of, one of the radios is damaged in use, that there's a replacement?
These, all these radios come with a three-year warranty, if anything happens to them with that, they want to repair them for free.
Okay. And with, wasn't there something they were talking about putting the tower up to the west in the Union City?
Yes, sir. Um, what I know of that, um, there is a tower, a Marx tower, purchased on a state capital grant, uh, to my knowledge, it's going up in Union City, uh, and last I was told, they're expected to start building the tower in April. I'm not sure how long it will take to put up, but that's just one smart, one part of the entire Marx for Dart County. They still have the, the county, that's just all the, the funding issues of the infrastructure at the two dispatch centers, on top of all the other radios for law enforcement, EMS and fire, 'cause, like I said, this grant's only paying for a portion. Essentially, my department, the majority of the portables we need, in the future, we'll still have to address pagers and mobile radios, just for our department, not to mention the console in the city.
So, the, the Marx is, is strictly, pretty much fire, it's not gonna be with the sheriff?
Everybody's gonna go to Marx.
Everybody will?
Law enforcement and EMS.
Okay.
All public safety will use Marx.
All right. And while you're up here, Chief, I, I wanna thank you for getting up and, and clarifying some things at the meeting last week, I appreciated that.
Thank you. Any more questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Chief Thompson, uh, so you have the estimate in front of you, uh, you've heard the particulars of the grant, or really not the particulars, but the particulars of the grant are that if we enter into the grant agreement with the fire marshal's office, they will issue the city of Greenville a check for forty-seven thousand dollars that will be received into our general fund. As we spend the money, uh, and we have to spend that money by September, uh, we will send a copy of our paid invoices to the fire marshal's office to show that we have spent the money. To make this purchase, uh, and we need to make, have legislation at the next meeting because, uh, this company or this sales rep does not, will not hold that price, so we need to, to move on this to get that number of radios, I would like to present before you at the next council meeting, due to the overall cost, legislation, uh, for the fire chief to go ahead and move forward with that purchase. Is there any opposition to having that legislation prepared? We will go ahead. We will go ahead and, uh, and have that ready. The next thing, as far as legislation, uh, a few weeks ago, council approved to have legislation approved for the small, ODOT Small Cities Grant and we stated at that time that we were actually, and we had a committee assignment, uh, we were dividing that Ohio Street project up into two grant processes, one was the Small City, which was due at the beginning, I believe, of February, the second opportunity was the Transportation, what's it called, the Transportation Alternatives Grant, which will pay for the sidewalks, the streetlights, the bike trail, anything that is non-street related, street reconstruction related. So, we have that estimate that was prepared by choice one, we're ready to move forward with that submission, so I will have that legislation, uh, for you at the next meeting and I believe Mr. Brand has actually already have that prepared, so. Then the last thing I would like to speak about and several council members have already, told me before the meeting that they're getting constituents that are calling them about the community aggregation, uh, we've had several phone calls in the mayor's office over the last several days, uh, because as you are aware, uh, we did enter into a contract with Dinerji for electric supply only, and that is key, electric supply, and I believe that rate was somewhere around, uh, five point two cents per kilowatt hour. And our citizens, or some of our citizens are receiving letters from Dinerji stating that they have a period of time to opt-out and that opt-out period is twenty-one days. The opt-out period is twenty-one days. So, a citizen in the city of Greenville is only receiving this opt-out letter if they do not, if they do not currently have a contract with another company for energy supply. That means they are paying the DPNL going rate. Okay? These are folks who are not in any type of an electric supply contract, they're paying the DPNL going rate. At this time, the DPNL going rate is most likely the highest rate that any citizen can pay for electricity. Okay? So, why that's important? If a citizen who receives the opt-out letter does nothing, if they do nothing at all, they will be deferred to the Dinerji rate of five point two cents per kilowatt hour. They will save money. Undoubtedly, they will save money. If a citizen contacts you and says, "I received this letter, what do I do?", if they wanna save money, tell them to do nothing. Okay? Now, they have the opportunity because they're now, a lot of folks are being made aware, "Oh, I didn't know I could go out on the open market and purchase electric supply", had no idea that this was even possible. They may be able, that day, to go out on the internet, apples-to-apples comparison, that is a website through the state of Ohio, they may be able to go out on the internet and find a cheaper rate than five point two cents per kilowatt hour. Most likely, they will not find that lower rate for a contract period of three years. This Dinerji contract is for three years. Okay? So, if they were to find, if a citizen was to find a lower electrical rate on this apples-to-apples website, then, as the letter states, they must call Dinerji or make contact with them and opt-out and say, "I do not want your services." That's the only reason that they would need to take further action, is if they did not want to accept the five point two cents per kilowatt hour. Any questions from council?
Yes.
Okay.
How does this fit into people who are normally used to receiving or through their current supplier getting, um, level billing, if you will? Do, does-
They will continue to pay their-
-that?
They will continue to pay their level bill based upon their, level billing is based upon your previous usage.
Right.
Okay? So, you will pay your level bill upon your level use, or upon your previous usage, okay? So, that amount is set, most likely it's set for a year's time and then generally in August, I believe is your catch-up month, you either get a rebate or you pay the difference because you used more than what was anticipated.
Right.
When they go to Dinerji and they start paying less, that's, now we've started this new period to formulate what maybe next year's level bill will be. If they're a level billing customer, they may not see an immediate reduction in their monthly bill because they've chosen to do monthly billing. Now, they could go off of monthly billing and then obviously they would be, could be paying less depending on what month that is. They may also be, and this is something that I'll find out, they may be able to call DPNL and say, "Hey, we've made the switch, I want my electric bill or my level billing recalculated."
If I, if I recall correctly my personal, uh, situation, uh, one time I had talked to an energy supplier and when you talk level billing with them, they didn't want any part of it, like-
Well, they're only, they're only, they're only giving you, they're only selling you electricity. DPNL sets that level billing amount and the supplier will stay out of it, they have nothing in it.
Okay. And you will still get the DPNL bill just like you are now.
You will get the DPNL bill and this was, you know, this is another, uh, confusing part, folks seem to think that they're going to be receiving another bill, a second bill from Dinerji. If you look at your DPNL bill, you pay two charges. You pay the transmission charge, which is the DPNL, we pay that transmission charge, goes directly to DPNL and that rate is set by PUCO, the Public Utilities Commission of Ohio. And then there's a second charge, the second charge is for energy supply. That could be Dinerji, that could be DPNL, um-
APE?
AEP, you had DPNL Energy.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, there's a whole slew of energy suppliers out there. So, you will, a customer will still receive only one bill. And at the very least, you talk to someone, you don't feel comfortable answering their questions, have them call the mayor's office, I will talk to them or we will refer them directly to AGE, that's what AGE is getting paid for.
Yep.
So, and we have that number and, um, that's what we'll do and that's how we're gonna handle it, so. If you don't have any other further questions, I will pass.
Clear as mud, thank you.
I, I do have one question, uh, concerning the cell of North School and, and I, I had a couple of people approach me about that, um, concerning, uh, the, the zoning for it, 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 what uses allowed there and also they were concerned because it was evidently an entity from out, out of the town, out of state, whether the, they will be held to keep it up to standards as far as the, the mowing and sidewalks and things like that. Do you know anything?
Uh, I, I can tell you that, yes, there was an individual from out of town who purchased that building, uh, I can tell you that prior to the closing on that property, all utility bills with the city of Greenville were made whole. I can tell you that I spoke to an individual who was to have a meeting with the out-of-town owner to take care of the property maintenance. Uh, I do not know what future intentions for that property are, but I can assure you that, uh, any future development will follow the same zoning process that any other building in the city of Greenville would.
But they, they, they have made arrangements for property maintenance?
I know that there was a meeting that was to be had, I do not know the outcome of that.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, appreciate it. Moving on, law director, Mr. Brand. Moving on, law director, Mr. Brand.
I'll pass.
City auditor, Mrs. Willman.
I'll pass as well.
Oh, my goodness. We might, we, I don't know if we're going to do a record or not. We're coming close. We have no committee reports scheduled for this evening. I will make a committee assignment, and that would be the, to the utilities committee, Mr. Godwin, Mr. Tryon, and Mr. Oliver, to meet regarding the providing utilities out of the city, you know, out of the city jurisdiction, to an entity requesting water and sewer hookup to their facility. And if you could have that ready by the next council meeting, I would appreciate it. I did not bring that with me, the, the email that you sent, but could you get Mr. Godwin a copy of it?
I will. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
We've received copies of them.
Oh, did you?
Yeah, we have received them.
All right. We have two ordinances and resolutions, one of each scheduled for this evening. First is an ordinance of supplemental appropriations.
An ordinance to make additional appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the city of Greenville, state of Ohio, during the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2017. This ordinance authorizes appropriations to the general fund for equipment maintenance, planning, and zoning in the amount of $3,000. These funds are needed due to an unexpected equipment failure. The CIP transferred general in the amount of $790,000. These funds represent a transfer to the CIP fund from the general fund. To the park fund for professional services park in the amount of $6,000. These funds represent donations toward the Stock and All program in the city park. To the CIP fund for general government new equipment, CIP, in the amount of $60,000. These funds represent the following: payroll upgrade, $40,000; planning and zoning vehicle for $20,000; the fire department new equipment, CIP, in the amount of $163,015. These funds represent the following: aerial platform for $111,408.91; fire chief's vehicle for $39,426; weather warning siren for $12,179; the street department new equipment, CIP, in the amount of $245,000. These funds represent the following: new skid loader with attachments for $70,000; new excavator with attachments for $90,000; new one-ton dump truck replacement for $85,000; roadway enhancement, CIP, in the amount of $143,531. These funds represent the following: miscellaneous paving throughout the city for $726,804; Ohio Street sidewalks for $135,000; West Third, Fourth, and Fifth Street curb sidewalks and ADA ramps for $60,000; application of Reclamite throughout the city for $49,800; right-of-way at Fourth and Switzer Streets for $29,000; Ohio East Main Street loan payment for $12,927; Russ Wagner Road intersection radar loop detectors for $30,000. And there was a change, if you'll note on your summary, to the general bond retirement fund instead of the GIP rail bond retirement fund. For bond principal, DIP rail bond retirement fund in the amount of $372,903; bond interest, GIP rail bond retirement fund in the amount of $4,208. These funds represent monies transferred from the GIP rail bond retirement fund.
That's it?
Motion to...
Did you read that second one again?
Yeah. I, I was going to make a motion to suspend the rules, but I think maybe we just wanted to have a full reading the second. Yeah. A motion to suspend the rules, given this is a reading by title only for a second, third time.
Okay. Well, that was just a summary. The title is pretty short. Motion, Mr. Tryon, suspend the rules and read the ordinance by title second, third time. Discussion? Call, roll?
Hensley?
Yes.
Hattishell?
Yes.
Oliver?
Yes.
Rogers?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Tryon?
Yes.
Godwin?
Yes.
An ordinance to make additional appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the city of Greenville, state of Ohio, during the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2017. An ordinance to make additional appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the city of Greenville, state of Ohio, during the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2017.
Motion to adopt.
Motion, Mr. Oliver, to adopt the ordinance. Discussion? Call, roll?
Hensley?
Yes.
Hattishell?
Yes.
Oliver?
Yes.
Rogers?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Tryon?
Yes.
Godwin?
Yes.
Okay. That concludes the ordinance and resolutions. We have nothing as far as older or new business. And we have any matters of communication?
A monthly report was received from the following department, Transit Department. This report has been distributed to council.
Is that it? Yeah, I got there. Well, am I missing a page? There it is. Okay. Send those on to the mayor, please. There's only one item in the commission. Anything else, call down the council, please.
Mr. Hensley?
Yes.
Hattishell?
Yes.
Oliver?
Yes.
Rogers?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Tryon?
Yes.
Godwin?
Yes.
A resolution authorizing advertising for rebidding the reconstruction of the Banchel Building. This resolution authorizes the safety service director to rebid for the reconstruction of a new 2020 square foot Banchel Building, as well as alternate bids for a building that includes restrooms and a security grill.
Motion to suspend the rules, given the reading by title only for a second, third time.
Motion, Mr. Tryon, to suspend the rules, read the resolution by title second, third time. Discussion? Call, roll?
Hensley?
Yes.
Hattishell?
Yes.
Oliver?
Yes.
Rogers?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Tryon?
Yes.
Godwin?
Yes.
Okay. That concludes the ordinance and resolutions. We have nothing as far as older or new business. And we have any matters of communication?
A monthly report was received from the following department, Transit Department. This report has been distributed to council.
Is that it? Yeah. Get out there. Well, am I missing a page? There it is. Okay. Send those on to the mayor, please. There's only one item in the commission. Anything else, call down the council, please.
Mr. Hensley?
Pass.
Mrs. Hattishell?
Um, just a question. How often is the flag changed on the flagpole in the circle?
Normally, every year, but it's, we had, we have the flags. We're just, we were waiting for a better day.
Oh, okay. Because the one out there is pretty...
Yeah. They're all going to get changed.
Oh, okay. And with that?
It looks like old glory, though.
Yes, it does. It gives a character.
I thought maybe you were going to ask about the, the direction, and I was going to say, "Well, whatever the wind blows, it changes direction."
I love you, Tracy. And with that, I pass.
Just a comment, a little bit more. We had, we ran out of the city flag. It normally is on the flagpost outside the city building. And the company that made those no longer does, and so we had to find another one that would be being made. So, we'll have the one to replace shortly.
Wow.
That, because there's not one up there right now. So, they'll all be changed shortly.
Thank you.
Mr. Oliver?
I shall pass.
Mr. Rogers?
Yeah, I had a citizen that frequents the Dollar General on the south end of town. And of course, we haven't had a lot of snow, but they said whenever there's snow on the ground, they didn't have a sidewalk to walk on. Any reason why there wasn't a sidewalk put there?
There's no other sidewalks along Switzer Avenue. And that was done when the reconstruction was done back in '92 or '93?
Well, I mean, yeah, but you're on the right track. But also, the plan for the Dollar General went before the planning and zoning board, and the planning and zoning board agreed to that change. They petitioned the planning and zoning board to not do those improvements, and their petition was granted.
But, but it, and it stays with the rest of the, the area out there, because...
Correct. And that's why that decision, and that's why they, that's why that was the deliberation as to why the, the variance was granted.
Okay.
I pass.
Mr. Schmidt?
I pass.
Mr. Tryon?
Um, Mr. Godwin asked about the township and, and meeting, and I thought that went very well. And I know that there's going to have to be some discussions later on about it, but the committee assignments or whatever, but I was very happy with, with what transpired. I was really, I was kind of proud of Chief taking the initiative ahead of time and, and making contact, and, and I really do appreciate that. You know, there were some other things that came to our attention to look at, and, and we'll see what, what direction it goes, goes in in the future.
Okay.
And I pass.
Mr. Godwin?
Yeah, because one of the things that was brought up, it's about the fire hydrants and the township and their thing, and I was kind of hoping that'd been a committee assignment today, but apparently it wasn't brought forward or something. But, you know, I kind of, you know, I like to deal with Greenville Fire Department, Greenville Township, and rescues kind of working together, that kind of get something worked out with the mutual aid. And, you know, seeing the two departments working as one. And with that, I'll pass.
President Burkett?
On that issue, when we concluded the, the meeting at the, with members of the, of the Greenville Township, we kind of left it that we were both entities, we're now going to go back and kind of, you know, talk among themselves and see what the next steps may be. And with that in mind, Clarence, rather than setting a committee assignment for one specific issue, I think there are a lot of issues that are all encompassing. And I would like for this council to consider yet another special session, just for that particular purpose. And it would be, again, a committee of the whole with no action taken. But what would this council's choice be for a meeting to do that specifically? I, I just think it's, it's a matter of significance enough that, rather than to try to do it after a regularly scheduled meeting, or a half an hour prior, or something like that, and I, you know, I know we're all, to serve the public, not just only the regular meetings of council to a month. And yet, another, the need for another special, I think, is in order for this one. So, does, do you, what preferences do you have? It doesn't have to necessarily be on a Tuesday. Personally, my Tuesdays are filled up for the rest of March and into April, a way. So, it would have to be after, April 11th is the first Tuesday I'd have open, but there are other dates as well. I don't know what all you, you know, members of council have suggestions, or, or we could, you know, again, it could be a, an earlier meeting, it could be a later meeting, it's just whatever council preference is.
How soon do you want it?
Well, I don't think it has to be like within the next week, but I don't think we should drag it out until June or July. Let me put it that way. Because these are some issues that really need to be, and, and again, there might be, have to be some research and some fact-finding, et cetera.
That April 11th is three weeks from now, isn't it? Yes.
Uh, yes.
It's on a Tuesday?
It's a Tuesday, yeah.
Is there any objections to a Wednesday? I mean, I mean, like, April the 12th? I mean, that's far enough in advance.
Yeah.
Mostly, I could make that doable, you know. Sure, you could too.
I think I could probably do whichever.
Wednesday, the 12th is a problem for me, for me personally. But again, you're the council, you're the voting members, and you...
Any day's fine, except, except Thursday was me.
A Tuesday or Wednesday's fine, and, and actually, the 5th is a good date. I actually was called by Mr. Kolb from the Township Trustees. He thought we met last night, and, and was asking to see, you know, when, when a meeting was going to be scheduled. And I said, "Well, I, I, I'm not a mind reader, and I don't have any terror cards, and I'll let you know tomorrow."
That'd be, that'd follow two meetings in a row, but I, I'm not opposed to Wednesday, the 5th, if anybody, if everybody else could make that. Is that a problem for anyone? Unlike members of the administration and fire chief, and I think we need the police chief here, and as we're looking at safety forces and the whole bit, so.
Well...
Is that an issue with anyone?
No. But I would also recommend, because as is just brought up with the issue with the hydrants, that we would invite Gary Evans, the water superintendent, as he is the responsible fire party, of anyone accessing the public water system.
Okay.
He's in charge of that.
That's fine.
What time?
You want to go 7?
I'm fine with any time.
7 o'clock? Was it a little earlier?
Yeah, I guess, say, 6, no, earlier, 6:30 for me.
Okay. Let's do, let's shoot for 7 o'clock.
April 5th at 7.
April the 5th, 7:00 PM. Ask the clerk to post that. Well enough in advance, it doesn't have to be done today, but, or tomorrow, but...
Where would that meeting be?
This is a council work session.
Just, just council work session, council chambers.
Were you going to do the advertising with the possibility of executive staff personnel?
Yes. Yes. Because we may be, we're dealing with personnel matters and negotiations as well. So, that might, will be a necessity for executive session in those matters. Further? Okay, that is set. Now, one other item. I want you to look ahead to your April, May, June, July calendar, and please note that the first meeting in, first Tuesday in July is July 4th. So, we need to do something to that effect. I think we'll all be out shooting off fireworks or something on that. Well, no, you won't, you won't be doing that, will you? Hopefully. But celebrating, I should say.
In some fashion.
In some fashion. What's, what's the preference of council there? Quite frankly, I don't recall what we have done in the past when this is hit. We go to the following Tuesday and do, that would put two, two meetings in a row. One council member suggested that we go the second and fourth on that month instead of the first and third.
How does that month end to the next month?
Well, that would put us...
Last meeting?
That'd put us two in a row.
Yeah.
So, we don't gain anything.
No.
Two in a row.
I, I think for financially, we, we should meet the second and third. That way, if there's anything that comes up...
There is one thing you need to keep in mind. That is also the time where we have to get the final budget approved, because it's due July 20th, and we usually always do it the first meeting of July. So, the sooner the better, I guess.
Well, the 11th and the 18th. The 18th, we could do, you know, it could be a last-minute job if we didn't get it done by the, by the 11th.
11th, okay.
But if the 20th is the, that's the date that you have to have it to the budget commission, right?
Correct.
Would we change the, the meeting time, or keep it at 7:30?
7:30.
What date is that in July?
July the 11th.
Okay.
That'll put us two weeks in a row, and it give us time to get that.
Carol would probably be under-
Will that work for Mrs. Willman? Will that work then?
That will work.
Budget-wise? All right. We still have time to tweak it if we needed to change it for some reason or another after that. And with that, I think I will pass. I have nothing further, so.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Mr. Oliver to adjourn. Call or roll, please.
Hensley?
Yes.
Hattishell?
Yes.
Oliver?
Yes.
Rogers?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Tryon?
Yes.
Godwin?
Yes.
Thank you all very much for your attendance. Have a good evening.